Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February fourteenth. Happy Valentine's Day, 2024. Work session for the Board of County Commissioners. We will be starting this meeting off going over legislative updates. I am present in the room with Councilmember Edwards. We have Councilmembers Mejia and Klaus online. And with that, I will turn it over to Assistant County Manager Robert Gelder to provide legislative updates.
Great, thank you.
We're councilmembers now? Did I miss something while I was done?
Promotion.
Title change.
What did I say wrong?
Councilmembers versus commissioners.
Oh, hey, old habits die hard.
Good morning, commissioners. I don't think we'll need a whole half hour for the legislative updates. Because I know the meet of this morning is really surrounding the docket discussion. But in your packets, wanted the first three pages really. The highlight is that the first cutoff from the House of Origin took place yesterday. That was one of the key ones. Also, I would on page three is the calendar of some of the additional upcoming dates that are going to be on the horizon that we'll be watching. Obviously, the twenty first will be the last day to be heard and passed out of policy committees of the opposite chamber. And then we have the second fiscal committee cutoff. And then the last day, March first, to actually pass out of the opposite chamber. And then quickly thereafter on March seventh is the last day of session. I did pull and put into the first three pages, and I won't be going over that. But just some potential bills of note of potential interest that have been moving along. That if there is something that kind of piques your interest, we can definitely do a deeper dive on that. The tracking, the legislative tracker specifically. Fifty-seven seventy is our the one percent to three percent cap change. Is dead at this point in time. Actually, all of these.
That was you.
All of those kind of fiscal bills unfortunately are dead. The relative to the NCS proviso, that is specifically for the legacy force. Commissioner Mensah has been reaching, he reached out with Representative Dolio last week and has also made contact with Senator Hunt to make sure that both of those provisos are in a good place within those respective houses and their capital budgets. So that is moving along at this time somewhere in the past hour, hopefully. David Bain did testify on the Senate version fifty-nine seventy for our local Board of Health flexibility bill that passed out unanimously out of the Senate and is in the local government this morning for a hearing. We're hoping that that will get exact and go to rules and quickly to the floor calendar and on to its way to the governor. Let's see, other items on the shared priorities. House bill on the bottom of the third page is House Bill two thousand and eight. That is dead since I updated this last night going over the bills. So that will be an update on there. Next page, House Bill twenty twelve, which is concerning the eligibility for a property tax exemption for nonprofits providing affordable rental housing. That did on the twelfth, since this report was pulled together, it passed sixty-nine to twenty-eight in the House. And this Friday, it will be having a hearing in the Senate Housing Committee. Going on nineteen twenty-six regarding LRA legislation did not make any progress this session. All of those bills are dead. The, we do have our capital request in for the meat processing. That until we see a capital budget, we don't know if that request will be viewed favorably. Continuing on in terms of elections. This was one of those bills that popped up with Auditor Hall yesterday about the even years, and it is dead. Did not make it out. Going on to something of interest probably for our CPED staff as well. Senate Bill fifty-seven ninety-two, which exempts buildings with twelve or fewer units that are no more than three stories hall from being classified as multifamily. That one did move out unanimously off the Senate floor on February sixth. And it will have a hearing today in the House Committee on Housing at ten thirty. So that one is moving. And going down to the next page, Senate or substitute House Bill twenty-two ninety-six. This is the giving us a little bit more, six months extension on our comp plan update. That is moving. So the Senate version sixty-one fifty was voted out unanimously from the Senate on February sixth, and it's been referred to the House Local Governments Committee. At the same time, twenty-two ninety-six passed the House yesterday on a ninety-six to one vote, which is great. And it is scheduled for a executive session in the Senate Local Government Committee tomorrow at ten.
You said our allows us, but it's other jurisdictions as well.
Sure, there's several jurisdictions, including Clallam, Clark, Island, Jefferson, Lewis, Mason, San Juan, Skagit, Thurston, and Watcom Counties. Yes, it was not a Thurston only bill, as much as we like those. That was not the case. Going on to sort of the general interest bills. House Bill nineteen hundred is dead. So is nineteen twenty-five, which was focusing on the expansion of veteran service officer programs in various counties. Unfortunately, the designating the Tenino Sandstone is the state rock.
Still, it's still a work in progress.
Is it really?
Well, there's, there's some behind the scenes going on between the two jurisdictions. We're trying to like, we're talking about creating a peace treaty between Wilkes and Tenino and then forming an alliance to.
In the interim?
Well, there's some amendments, there's some amendment talks.
Okay.
To some other bills.
Hopefully, we can make it somehow necessary to implement the budget.
Some dirty politics going on.
Okay, well, we'll rely on your knowledge of the back.
All the behind the scenes stuff. This is where the real stuff happens.
Yes, where the real sausage is made, exactly. And then the TPA fixed bills are moving along well also. The House Bill twenty-one thirty-seven and Senate Bill sixty-two oh two. Twenty-one thirty-seven was voted off the House floor unanimously on the February eighth. And the Senate bill was voted off the Senate floor on the February seventh. So both bills are now currently being scheduled. And as of last night, tomorrow, there will be an exec session in the Senate Committee on Business Finance, Gaming and Trade, that will address that piece as well, which will be a good fix. If that goes through, then we don't have to amend our local code. And with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have. Or I know you really want to jump into the docket. Commissioner Klaus.
Sorry, I know we want to get to the docket, but I did have a quick question regarding, I believe it was House Bill two thousand and twelve regarding affordable housing and property taxes. Do we know when they say affordable housing as it relates to that specific bill? Are we talking like sixty percent AMI or lower? Do we know?
I would have, I can check on the bill. I don't have the full bill in front of me. But it really was focused on making new eligibility for tax exemptions if there were government funds going into the affordable housing project. But I can follow up on that and get that answer to you later.
Okay, thank you, that'd be great. And then I have one quick question about the even year elections bill that Auditor Hall brought up yesterday. That was the one she said she was hoping it doesn't move forward, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Any other questions for? All right, that wraps up legislative updates.
One sec, one sec. Sorry, I was slow to raise my hand, I apologize. In terms of testifying for any of these bills, Rob, if you would like any of us to go, just please let us know. I know that I'm always happy to go up and testify. I know that other commissioners feel the same way.
I appreciate that offer, Commissioner. We'll definitely keep you in the loop.
Thank you. All right, that concludes legislative update. Next on the agenda, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five docket process. This is a review of projects, not a ranking of projects. So I think there was, I know there's some confusion on my part. And I thought that today we were going to be talking about how the, the projects are aligned. But today we are going to review the docket, is that correct? Okay.
No, I, I think, thank you. Commissioners, this is a great opportunity and really my first time being with Thurston County. And so this docketing process, because every jurisdiction does it differently. But I think the only thing I would add before going into the staff discussion really is probably our number one docket item, even though we may get additional six months to complete it, is the comprehensive plan update. And I just would offer that everything that the board grapples with in terms of addition to the docket will be for the most part utilizing the very same resources that we have, other than those components that are outsourced to consultants, the very same staff and expertise that we have doing everything else. So that was just my note of balance and all of that. Sir?
I guess just as a follow up on those comments. My concern is that we utilize staff to address those type of issues. And we allow applicants to pay their way on other types of developments so that we can move forward with those and create a tax base in this county. So we can provide the proper services to our citizens, we can fix our buildings. We have never had an adequate revenue stream to take care of business, the county business. And the reason we've never had that, not only did the state legislature fall down when they created the Growth Management Act, they never came back with the corrected funding sources. And then we've just been dying on the line. And if we don't make some changes to where we create jobs and, and other promoting other business activities in the county, we're just never going to be able to provide the services we need, and our buildings are going to fall down around us. And I don't see the voters bailing us out if we don't try to do what we can do ourselves.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. I was going to ask in terms of like, again, for, for, I, for my like help. It would be good to know like, okay, how many staff do we have? And out of, let's say, ten staff that are gonna, that is working on docket items, we're gonna need six of those staff to be working on comprehensive, you know, and so that leaves four staff. And that's gonna be dependent on kind of how big those projects are. So kind of doing kind of more of a, a rudimental breakdown would be, would be helpful for me. Just, just throwing it out there.
Okay. You ready? I share the same concerns, and I'm still curious about the, the suggestions that Commissioner Edwards made at our last meeting where he was talking about allowing external consultants that we had possibly designated to, you know, kind of taking shepherd some of the work.
So maybe let's take a step back and talk about what we have talked about, what we're going to talk about today and what we're going to talk about in the future. So recognizing that we have a newly expanded board, five commissioners, Assistant County Manager that hasn't gone through the process, whole bunch of new stuff. So staff's intent to first, the first meeting we did was to talk about the docketing process itself in general. What we're going to talk about today are the docketing items, the specific items that are on the docket. And then the next that are up to be considered for the docket, excuse me. And then the next briefing will be that prioritization. And so Commissioner Mejia, that conversation on prioritization and resources, I think, is an important one. But the first step is actually just knowing what you got, right? And so today is essentially an inventory. So before we start prioritizing stuff and shuffling things, it's important to know what we have. And so today's conversation is essentially an inventory of the docket items that have been requested to be on the docket. And I think that there's a couple of things to keep in mind as you're, this is a learning process, right? We're all learning this together because these are new items, some of them, some of them are carryover items. But it's important that we have a full conversation, and if the Board of County Commissioners knows what you're being asked, right?
You have a question from Commissioner Mejia.
Go for it, Commissioner Mejia.
Just a comment, no, thank you, Josh, I, I do appreciate that. But I guess as, you know, I know today's just the inventory of what is on the docket. But as we go on to that next step of prioritizing, for me, it would just depend on the resources that we have, right? Like, if in a perfect world, I might rate like something much higher because we have that ability to go straight through. But if we don't have the staffing resources, we might be ranked lower just because we just don't have a capacity right now. So I, for me, it's more of a mental note as we're moving through this process of like what is actually available and what is actually feasible for us to, to really complete and in the timeline that we want.
Completely understood. And that was the next thing I was going to say is that we focus a lot on staff resources, but there's also other constrictions to keep in mind. The fact that we have a planning commission that only has so many day, so many hours in a day. We are, in terms of customer service, other jurisdictions shut down for a time their acceptance of site-specific rezones while they're working on the comprehensive plan. Here at Thurston County, we don't do that. We allow site-specific requests to come in at the same time that we're working on the comp plan. And so like you just heard from the Assistant County Manager, we have other expectations that we've got to put on that may impact that conversation of the pay for this item for movement on there. There is still process that has to be put in place. So staff isn't making up the noticing deadlines and the public hearing deadlines. And so when somebody says, we want to pay our way to go faster, we need to understand better what, what are they paying for? Because you can't speed up the public process. And so keeping those things in mind in terms of constrictions, staff resources, planning commission, time, public process, it's not just a matter of paying to go faster. There's also a process that stands in place to ensure that the decisions that the Board of County Commissioners are making are able to stand on appeal. So a lot of times we hear from applicants, things aren't going fast enough, and it's not enough in what they're asking for. What we hear from other constituents is it's going way too fast, and the applicant's getting way more than we think that they should have in terms of land use. And so finding that balance is really going to be an important part of the process, which is why state law exists for that process. So I want to keep in mind that it's not just staff resources that are constrictions. It's the planning commission's time, and it's the public process that's required. And so as we're talking about the items that are on the inventory for consideration, having all those pieces of the puzzle is going to be important. But I don't want to lose that, the time that we have to go through the different rezones that have been requested, because you're going to get a lot of information right off the bat. What staff has tried to do is distill that into those one-pagers, but it's never going to be enough, okay? So we're going to try and go through these one-pagers to hit the high levels of all of the rezone requests. But if we get off track and start talking about, well, I like this one better, or I think this one's better, or how come we can't pay to move that thing faster, we're going to lose sight of doing the inventory. So my request would be, take this time today to get through these one-pagers, and then we can have a more in-depth conversation about resources, constrictions, planning commission, time, process. All that stuff plays into your prioritization. But if we lose sight of what we're actually being asked at this moment, then we're not going to be able to have that conversation.
Conversation is on Monday.
And that conversation is, that starts the prioritization and.
So another big piece of that, talking about balance, is making sure that you all allow for the twenty-day comment period. So as you're talking about that prioritization and what to put on the official docket, that you're taking into consideration, all the comments are going to come in between now and that conversation. So it's going to be scheduled a little bit further out. I think the draft date we have, Andrew, what's the draft date we have?
So for March, on March twenty-fifth, which is a Monday, we have the docket decisions. And that's going to be where we're going to have an interactive activity to see the projects and the level of staff required for each of those projects and be able to decide what's going on the official docket, what's going on the preliminary docket, and what's going on, what's not going to be considered. And then to ensure that it's still fresh in the mind, we're going to return on Wednesday for an hour meeting to discuss the prioritization. So to put them in the order that you see as the most important projects first kind of thing.
So that's a preliminary schedule. The big decision that you all get to make today is, do we move forward with that comment period? And lock down those dates so that we can all return and, and have that exercise.
And so that's a, that's a speed thing. If you want speed, then tell us to get started.
Hurry up.
That's it, me, that's it. We keep, we keep talking about it, go around. Also, Commissioner Mejia, I know you're not in the room, but you should know that there's chocolates all over the table here. Our planning staff wanted to make this a nice, fun, exciting adventure. So we have dockets, dockets and chocolates. So just know that those are available if and when anybody is, wants a chocolate. And Andrew touched on it briefly. We're also looking to try and put some like creativity into this conversation. So when he talked about, we're going to have the staff resource conversation on Monday in terms of how much this goes here and this goes there, it's going to be interactive. It's going to be not a game necessarily, but definitely something that where you can see visually what the resources are and what they take. And if you look at those one-pagers, also Commissioner Mejia, on there, it does state the level of staff that each one of those items will take. So you'll start to see that there is point five FTE for this item and one point five FTE for that item. And you can start to add that up. And so that's the conversation that we're going to have when we get to the prioritization. But that information is already there and stated on those one-pagers. So sorry, I took a bit of a diversion there because I'm excited for the staff to inject some creativity into this process.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So today we're just deciding, are we going to open this up for a twenty-day comment period? And you said something about it's kind of a matter of speed. So if we want you to get started, we just need to let you know. Do, what would happen if we said, we don't want to move this forward for a comment period? Does it die at that point, or will it come up later?
So in typical past, because this is a reset year, the docket is essentially blank. And so we would need to establish some aspect of the docket to put Thurston twenty forty-five on or any of the other projects you deem important. Because in a mid-year, that, that approach would work. You would still have the twenty-day comment period, you just would then decide not to open the docket to make revisions to it. But on the refresh years, we do have to still open it because it's kind of a blink, a blank slate until we add something to the plate.
Okay, thank you.
But we got to get started. Okay, are we ready, Commissioner Mejia also? Any more questions?
Nope, I'm ready.
Okay, let's go. All right, here we go.
And, and go.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Andrew Bond with Community Planning. I have a brief little presentation prior to diving into the docket sheets that will kind of go over a wide range of things you've already seen, but I'll just touch on them briefly to just be kind of a reminder. As I mentioned, we're going to go over just a little bit of the process, information on the docket sheets, and then dive directly into the docket sheets to go through each of the specific projects included is proposed projects in the docket. There are some requests that we need from the board that we'll touch on later on in the presentation, as well as the next steps, and open it up for questions. As you're all aware, you can ask questions at any point during this presentation. So I assume when we get to the rezones, there'll be quite a few questions on the. So I assume when we get to the rezones, there'll be quite a few questions on those. So here's the general timeline that we anticipate. Today, we're at the reviewing project stage. As I mentioned earlier, we do have tentative dates scheduled for March 25th, which is a Monday, to go over the decisions on the docket. And then on that following Wednesday, prioritization, and then ideally adoption the following Tuesday at a regularly scheduled meeting. So not today, but this is kind of keeping in your back of your mind, these will be the three decisions that we will have to have on each of the projects listed on the docket. It will be to add the project to the official docket, place it on hold or put it on the preliminary docket, or remove it entirely from the docket. Before we dive right in, here's just a quick overview. These project sheets contain a wide range of informations that just highlight, high level what the project is. There's the applicant information, the project descriptions and details on just what the project means, any review that was done prior by the board and a general location map, projects that apply throughout the county. We'll just have a generic countywide map showing that it covers everywhere. On the backside, we'll have just a general summary of comments, staff analysis, and an estimated process timeline with the completion date, not date, but time, as well as staff resources.
I just want to pause on that real quick. These one-pagers, these are really your crib notes. And this is a huge efficiency step that the staff took a couple of years ago. Prior to this, Board of County Commissioners had to flip through tons of documents and pages. What staff has done here is collated all of that information onto this one sheet. So this is going to be where you need to go, take your notes, put your notes on this page. This is where we hope to continue to have a more in-depth conversation, but quick snapshots are really important. So good work.
So before we dive in, there are two dockets that we'll be considering today, the Comprehensive Plan docket and the Development Code docket. Comprehensive Plan will contain any changes related to the Comprehensive Plan, joint plans, subarea plans, land use and rezone amendments. Those again are adopted once a year. Development Code docket will contain projects that relate to changes to the development regulations, permitting regulations, and those are on a rolling adoption, so we can adopt those at any point during the year. Okay, let's dive right in. So the first project that we're going to go over will be the Capital Improvement Plan. This project is a, an annual plan that we go over every year to adopt the latest set of projects the county needs to do to meet the level of service needs throughout the county. As you all remember from December, this is kind of in alignment with the budget and is adopted in December with the budget. We have regularly scheduled meetings in the summer and throughout the fall to just establish the project list and bring it forward through the public process. There's, this is a pretty low interest among the community as well as staff resource needs. And it is a requirement under the Growth Management Act to complete this.
Let's do a quick check-in. So these items come in through different doors, and I think you have it listed there at the top, county-initiated requests. So you hear a lot about the requests that come in from the outside, the site-specific rezones from individual applicants, but we have things that we have to do also internally. So it's important to know, the Board of County Commissioners can tell us what to do something, county-initiated, we are required to do items through the Comprehensive Plan, staff has sometimes concepts that come in. So looking at that county-initiated request, seeing what door the request is coming in through is really important piece of this conversation. What am I missing? I feel like I'm missing...
I think that's really about it. And I think how we kind of want to approach this is maybe just stop for a second, see if there's any questions. If there's no questions, we just keep moving through the packet.
What are the doors that different requests come through?
So we have state requirements, we have board, board-initiated priorities, and that would be like the agricultural policies and programs update. That was really a priority set by the board based on community input a few years back. And yeah, and then there's really just sort of our Comprehensive Plan requirements. And in terms of other county-initiated development services staff, especially when we get into the Development Code docket, we'll have suggestions based on their interactions with the public and processing permits. And then the other, the other big door is applicant-initiated. So anyone can submit a docket, a docket request, and then, you know, our job at that point is to bring it forth to you. So we don't really spend much time on it prior to bringing it, bringing it forth in this conversation. I'm really just looking to make sure that you've got the accurate information to make a decision about whether to put it on the docket or not.
Stuff we have to do, stuff we get to do. Sir?
On the have-to-do portion of this, I've, this is my seventh year, eighth year, I guess, of doing this. And we've always been behind on certain things. So the have-to-do is a guide, in my estimation, it's a guide that has always been extended if you didn't get there. You have to continue to show that you're making progress towards that end. So I hate to have new commissioners feel that, well, they're going to take your birthday away if you don't get this done by July 1st, because that's not the way it works.
With the exception of the comp plan, the comp plans are...
Well, even, even the comp plan, they've, they've made exceptions all the way along with all jurisdictions. That's why I brought up that this is not unique to Thurston County, this piece of legislation that Rob pointed out. It's ongoing, we're, we're always behind the eight ball, it seems like. And so there's, there's, I'm just pointing out that from my point of view, I hate to see the philosophy of delay everything else to do the state's job when the state really doesn't demand that service. They just want you working towards something. We've been as far behind as seven years or some darn thing, several different issues. I just want to point that out.
Yeah, it, it really depends on the state and sort of their mood at the time, right? But there, there are potential hammers. If we aren't compliant, if we don't meet our deadlines, then that can risk financial revenues to the county.
Out of commerce or something.
Commerce or any other grants. If we're not compliant, then that, we aren't eligible to apply. So there, there is a potential offset to that, that's a concern and a consequence.
And I'll, I'll just address, Commissioner Edwards, I think you're right on. The experience that you've had these past few years has been the county digging out of a lot of holes that we dug ourselves into over the previous couple of decades. And the staff and the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners for the past five or six, eight years has been working to get out of that. And so you saw that we got our Comprehensive Plan update submitted to the, the commerce. We had our continuing items submitted to the commerce. We just finished the Shoreline Master Program, submitted to Ecology. And so a lot of those big, the joint plans worked with all the cities. So you've experienced a lot of digging out of a lot of holes. And I'm excited that we're on this kind of back on track. This was, been the goal for five years. And so you, Commissioner Edwards, have been a part of getting county back on track. Now these new commissioners get to experience something hopefully different than you did where the county was off the track. So the goal here is for us to stay on track with the expectations of all of the requirements of the state so that we don't have to go through the machinations of losing grants or other funding from Ecology or Commerce or other places that because we're late on these items, we don't get funding for these other items. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear. I appreciate your experience. Hopefully we don't repeat that. It's like, it would be good to stay on track.
Being as you bring it up, how much of a delay, I'm trying to think of the number of years on the shoreline management, it was, it was way behind. I mean, years behind, but I can't remember how many anymore. Was it twenty years? Was it twenty years that we were delayed?
About twenty years, yep.
So just, I just say that for my seatmates that never experienced it, that there was a deadline. Took us twenty years past the deadline to get that accomplished, for whatever reason. I mean, there's a lot of different reasons.
And again, yeah, I'm sorry.
At different times, we, we did have to contest Commerce's withholding of funds and different things.
That took a lot of time.
During that, you know, it took legal time and stuff to do it, but, but we won in the end, so.
Commissioner Mejia?
I, you know, in terms of that, you know, when we delay things like this, like the shoreline management plan, the fact of the matter is that a lot of our own constituents suffered because they didn't have like regulations that were really matching up to, you know, and it just became this convoluted code and very difficult. And when we delayed these things, right, I've, I've gone through now my fourth year going through the docket process, I'm, I'm glad that we're finally at a point where we can finally be caught up. And I, I don't want to get caught behind again because at the end of the day, it's the other applicants also suffer when, whenever we don't update something like the Comprehensive Plan. It, it just, it just goes downhill after that, right? And then it becomes this huge massive wall and then all of a sudden we have this huge backlog. And so there is a consequence to not updating these certain things in the long run. And, you know, I've, I've been a witness to it as I've come in.
Same, man.
And I appreciate, if I may, Commissioners, I think that's a great point. And what might be actually helpful for the board is to look beyond two years. Because everything that is, that comes that's part of the docket through our cycles, and I would argue that if we started or at least had a 10-year map that was really saying, okay, we have a comp plan due here, in 10 years, we have another comp plan update due, and then we have the SMP, we have the CAO, we have all of these large bodies of work that drive a certain, they're foundational. But if we know, if we can look far out, then we have a better sense of how to plan and kind of resource in those years. Because is everything, there, there are peaks and valleys of that level of effort and lift. So I, I think that looking longer term would actually serve us well.
And we completely agree. It's nice to be out of the hole and have our head up to be able to think about that 10-year planning. It's a good idea.
Let's continue the docket discussion.
Okay. Moving on, we're going to jump to the ag policy and program review and the LTA zoning update. This is a review of agricultural policies and changes to the long-term ag zoning designation. There's also code provisions related to that that you're seeing currently, and then later this summer, we anticipate the, the mapping changes coming for you. This was officially docketed in 2020, and there are multiple other pieces related to it, related to the open space tax program or the conservation futures and the TDR and PDR. The TDR and PDR, Transfer of Development Rights, is its own separate Development Code docket item that you'll hear later on.
And there's one, since I've been the lead on that project, the, the mapping piece in particular is in response to an appeal on the comp plan update, the previous comp plan update. And so in terms of prioritization or why we are continuing to work on that in a timely manner, it is because it is under appeal. And then the other things are, you saw a lot of updates come through this last year, and as the board identifies other opportunities, we'll be able to work on those.
We anticipate a pretty high staff resource need as well as a pretty high public interest. During the 2022 docketing cycle, we received 21 comments. In the 2023 docketing cycle, we received five. Generally, those comments were related to maintaining the current ag lands and responding faster to the appeal. Based on the current trajectory, we're looking at an expected completion in the fourth quarter of 2024.
And that would be part of that once-a-year adoption of comp plan updates.
So we're going to buzz through these pretty quick, these one-pagers.
Okay. The Nisqually Subarea Plan, the plan was originally adopted in 1992 and hasn't been substantially updated since that point. The project was officially docketed in 2017 and ranked in 2022, five out of nine. It looks at the visions, goals and policies of the Nisqually Valley. We just recently had an open house that was very well-attended with over 65 people attending, members from the community, then the Nisqually Tribe, and then different state and nonprofit representatives from either DOT and whatnot. They all attended, were very well-attended. We received approximately 55 comments from that open house with themes relating to the natural environment, rural character and transportation, and they have received a few comments during both docketing cycles. The project originally started in 2017, but had to be put on pause and it was restarted in 2023. And this will be a complete refresh of the Nisqually plan since the 1992. And based on the current trajectory, we're looking at the fourth quarter of 2024. Moving in to Thurston 2045, you are all very well aware of this project. This is the county's periodic update, required number of GMA. We're going to be taking a look at multiple chapters throughout the plan as well as updating maps, figures, and subsequently the development codes as it's required through the update. This is a 20-year outlook, so we'll be looking out to 2045. And as mentioned previously, the current due date is June of 2025, and it is partly grant-funded.
And the, one of the reasons that we did do project sheets for each of these individual items is because as you think about process, we are breaking this down into those individual elements, and each element or maybe paired, you know, two elements paired together will be going through the planning commission on its own. So it is a, it's a big lift, both for staff and the planning commission for process. We basically have the planning commission booked already from April through the end of November, early December, just looking at all of these different elements of the comp plan.
As Ashley mentioned, it is a high staff resource. And we'll have pretty high public interest. We've had multiple surveys with very great turnout from those surveys. And again, that is due in June of 2025.
And we do already have a briefing scheduled for February 26th to talk about the outreach that's been done so far and next steps and sort of the overall process.
If you want to just go ahead and skip to the BLQ and Wilmosky page, it's after all of the pages.
It's really confusing, the way this is stapled together.
Oh, no.
The packet, so I think it had each one pager and then the presentation was at the back.
Yeah. Where are you telling me to go? Did we print it?
Page 32.
32.
You're referring, you're working off of the one pagers, the actual...
Are you working off of page nine now or eight?
So I made sure there was page numbers at the bottom. If you're at page 32 of 51.
For the project sheets.
For the project sheets.
Yeah.
So those are the one pagers. We just shifted from the presentation. We said we're going to go into looking at each one of the projects. So now we're on the project stage. Thirty, 32?
32 of 51.
And you're not going to have enough on there.
We can pull that out.
No, no, I'm just saying.
It's hard to read.
32 of 52.
If, we do have it ready if, if you want to look at the maps, otherwise...
Is it out there? Is, is, is this packet out there for the public?
33.
So they can grab.
33 of 52.
So it's 32 and 33. So that's page one and two of the pack, of the page.
Ours, it's, seems like the second page is 32 and the first page is 33. So we may be off of that. So you're talking...
BLQ and Wilmosky, if you look at the top left side is the title.
So it's, it's 33 and 34.
Okay. Different pages.
Did we not send PDFs?
Yeah, we did PDFs.
It's a different version. Ours is 52 pages and yours is 51, so we may be off. Sorry.
Good question, Commissioner Edwards. This information can be found both on the board's website for the meeting as well as we created a separate webpage just for this docket process to make it really easy for folks to identify where to go to find more information and provide comment.
So the BLQ and Wilmosky proposal, it is part of the Grand Mound project that you saw last year. At the request of the board, we did break the project up for the parts that could be, could be completed in 2023 and the remaining rezonings that weren't able to be completed. And because of the different locations that those proposals are located in, we broke it up into two categories, Grand Mound West and Grand Mound East. The Grand Mound West contains two proposals, the Black Lake Quarry and the Wilmosky Rezone. Both of those have UGA expansion requests associated with them. The BLQ or Black Lake Quarry is a rezone of 66 acres from residential resource, rural residential resource 1 to 5 to rural resource industrial RRI. The Wilmosky request is a rezone from 29 acres from rural residential resource RRI, RR 1 to 5, to residential 4 to 16 dwelling units per acre, or R4 to 16 to 1. This was docketed in 2022 and prioritized one out of nine during the Grand Mound total package. And just as a reminder, it was the subarea plan, the code amendments, and two rezones that were completed last year with the comp plan packet.
I have a quick question on that.
There's, why, why are there two different projects on this proposal? What if we decided, just hypothetically, like we want to move forward with one but not the other? Would they be separated or would they, are they just, they come as a pair and it's either you accept or reject both?
The board would have the option to to split them if necessary. Uh, we were looking at, um, there were actually four outstanding projects that relocated outside of the the urban growth area. And because they required that an extra step, which is the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee, we kind of separated them out from adoption of the Grand Mound Sub Area Plan and changes within within the existing UGA. Um, so they've already been split between four proposals to two, two on the west, two on the east. But yeah, the board would have the option.
Is it appropriate to ask them to be split now?
If the, if the board wants them to be split now, really the next step is coming before the board and doing environmental review. And so we're working on environmental review right now. And if, you know, you want them to be split, it would just be separate, separate briefing, separate hearings before the board.
When was this before the board? Because it, there was direction from the board not too long ago to do.
Due to the west and the east.
East-west split and be able to move the west forward because there was a more streamlined path for that? Be able to move more quickly, I just don't remember.
That was prior, that was the three commissioners, I think, that made that decision, wasn't it?
No, this was in January.
It was in January, okay.
Just don't remember when in January.
January, it was like January ninth or something, in in early January.
As a follow-up to that, I remember one of this, one of my seatmates asked something about that hardship district down. And I'm, I'm not sure that's the proper terminology down in Grand Mound. You know, just just south of the uh Great Wolf Lodge. There's an area down there that's right up against the Lewis County line. It's not called the hardship district, it's, it is something else.
Is it the Upcastle project? That's the only one that's south, that's at least on the docket.
Maybe that's part of it, but the district itself is designated somehow by the state. Yeah, like maybe an opportunity zone.
That we put that on a few, on a briefing soon. So we'll be talking about opportunity zones in that area real soon.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, how that's going to fit, is that going to get added?
So we'll have a briefing coming up.
Okay.
Jenica's working on that.
So that would be part of like the further staff analysis that would be done if a project gets added to the docket. But we haven't looked into that at at this point.
So back on this docket item though, I just want to make sure. You can separate it if you'd like, but this one's pretty close to the finish line. The Board of County Commissioners has gone through four open houses, we've gone through the UGM, Urban Growth Management Subcommittee, the TRPC. If Commissioner Minster was here, he would provide his perspective, he was the board's representative on that. I think that you can separate it if you like, but we're pretty darn close to the finish line on both these projects. And the board has had a lot of input that they're both pretty close to being complete. So it's up to the board, but I want to make sure that that point in history is clear. Should we move on to the next?
Sure. Unless there's any further questions.
Then moving to Grand Mound East, we have the Deskins Land Use and Rezone Proposal. And that is a proposal to rezone uh forty acres from rural residential resource one, RR one to five to arterial commercial. You may remember from the original.
And where, which page are you referring to?
You're going to be on thirty-five, thirty-five of fifty-two.
Sure, got it.
You may recall from the previous proposal, the entire parcel was included as uh the AC zoning district. But since that point, the applicant has come back to us and actually shrunk the rezone to only being about forty acres of the overall parcel.
Yeah, and that's the north portion. So this was the third proposal that the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee looked at for UGA expansion. They did not recommend moving forward with it. One of the reasons was that there were critical areas on the property. So Mr. Deskins, um, in response to that feedback that he heard, has amended the proposal to just be the northern portion.
And that's where the forty acres come in.
We anticipate a pretty high staff resource to finalize this project and there hasn't been that much comments related to the project. And if it were to be docketed, it would be an expected completion in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four. Moving on to the second project in the Grand Mound East package, and that is the Jackson Rezone. This proposal does not uh adjust the UGA. It is just a nineteen acre rezone from rural resource uh uh RR one to five to rural resource industrial. Uh, part of the Grand Mound package, uh, it does anticipate to have a high staff need as well as high public interest. Um, and it was part of the four open houses as well that Josh had mentioned. And again, this would be expected to complete in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four.
And and the reason that you're seeing that twenty twenty-four date is because all of these have already been considered by the planning commission last year. And so we would still move these forward with the planning commission recommendation. Um, so the next step is really environmental review, um, and then board consideration.
So remember those two things we talked about in terms of staff resources, planning commission resources and process? These have gone through most of those three items.
Moving on to the bar holdings, UGA swaps, land use amendment and rezone. This is a proposal to remove uh eighteen parcels from the UGA and bring in three outside parcels. This is a new allowance under RCW thirty-six seventy A, um, one thirty, which allows areas to be removed and areas to be added in as long as it remains a net zero increase.
And so this is really a new tool under the Growth Management Act. Currently, um jurisdictions can only add land to the urban growth area or take away land from the urban growth area. So in the recent legislative session, not this one, higher one.
That was in twenty twenty-two, wasn't it?
Yeah, so they added this new tool which essentially allows us swap. So if you hear folks refer to UGA swap, this is what they're, this is what they're referencing. And this would be, as far as we know, the the first one, um, potentially in the state, um, this application. So it is, it's a new tool.
RCW thirty-six dot seven zero A dot one three zero?
So this is, uh, I think it's important to know, you will have the opportunity to direct us to open the formal twenty day comment period. But that doesn't mean that people won't provide comments anytime that they want. And so with this one in particular, we're already getting comments uh on how this process works and the definitions of the RCW and how great potential projects might be in the future. But know that this is where that balance of process comes in. We want to make sure that we do this right, uh, and that we have clear and full conversations and the board has an opportunity to weigh all of the potential pros and cons of going first on this UGA swap method. It's kind of exciting. Thurston County keeps going first on lots of items, habitat conservation plan and all sorts of other stuff. But we want to make sure that we do it right because this is an important tool. Uh, if you've got land in a UGA somewhere else that you know is not going to be able to be developed and those parties are willing to swap that land out of the UGA to an area that could be more beneficial for development, that conversation I think is an important one to have. So this is a potentially exciting new tool, but if we're going to do this with the board, we want to make sure that we do it right.
The comments out that we receive outside of the comment period get included and compiled into the, okay.
Yes.
And and I will say at least under current legislation, although there is proposed legislation to change this, it can only be pulled in to a periodic review. And so that is what we're currently in with the comp plan update. Um, and so that will impact the timeline, like we will only be able to move so fast as our periodic review.
Yeah, so remember the staff resources, planning commission and process. So in terms of process, the way the RCW is written is that when you do a UGA swap, it can only go with the big comp plan.
Oh.
And so our comp plan is slated to go for completion at the end of twenty twenty-five. So the UGA swap would have to be a part of that. That's the way the RCW is written. That's not Thurston County staff making this up. You can't pay your way out of that to go faster, but it's as what the RCW says. If that changes in legislation, then we could potentially go faster in the process. But the one that's going to have this one slowed down in a UGA swap is a process. It's not staff resources, it's not planning commission, it's the way the RCW is written.
I have a follow-up to that. You mentioned, um, this would have to be completed, moved forward by the end of twenty twenty-five, is that right?
It could, it would be rolled into the comp plan package that is slated to be completed in twenty twenty-five.
Currently mid-twenty twenty-five.
Currently mid, yes.
So does that mean?
Go ahead.
To um approve it this year or next year? So like if we decided we're not quite ready for this yet this year, um, we want to review it again in twenty twenty-five, would it, would it be too late at that point? Is this our last year to approve it before?
Yeah, so go ahead.
Probably to get through all of the pieces. I mean, if it's really supposed to be rolled into the comprehensive plan update, then you want it reflected when we do our land capacity analysis and all those other pieces. Because this is the year that we're doing all of that analysis. And so I would say it would make most sense to have it be docketed if the board chooses to this year to be folded into that that broader planning effort.
Remind us when, how often we're supposed to complete our comprehensive plan update?
Ten years, there is a mid-cycle review, um, five years. And the current legislation before, or that's being considered is that could be annual.
So thinking about the way the RCW is written, uh, UGA swaps have to go with the comp plan amendment, right? Or.
The big, the big comp plan update.
Update. So it's kind of actually, even though it feels long for this potential UGA swap project, the train that's leaving the station right now on the comp plan that we're discussing actually is much quicker than if I had to wait for the next potential five-year or ten-year update. So it might not feel great to the applicant the way the RCW is written, but it's actually pretty darn good timing. If the board wanted to entertain it and moving now, it would be wrapped up into the one that we're completing in twenty twenty-five. So it's quicker than it would be, but obviously never quick enough for someone who wants to do something.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to understand when we, when we talk about process, like, and not just specific to this um proposal, but all of them. If we were to postpone, how how late would be too late? Because I want to just understand like how much time we would have to really digest everything. I mean, looking at the bar holdings, well, it looks like we've gotten a ton of comments on this so far. And there are other ones that are just as complex, so I'd just like to know that. I mean, you kind of saw that when we talked about the joint plan last year. I was like, how much time do I have to really understand this before we have to make a decision? So I like to just understand that piece.
Yeah, thank you for that. It it's a, it's, it's an interesting question because really the, the decision is on the Board of County Commissioners and it's how quick and responsive you want to be to your constituents. So you could delay and that would likely be frustrating for lots of folks, but.
Yeah.
It's kind of on the Board of County Commissioners to make that decision on time.
Awesome, thank you.
Continue through this, more pieces to it. So the properties being removed from the UGA will be rezoned to a county zoning district. Those will include the rural resource, uh, rural residential resource RR one to five and rural resource industrial. And then the areas being added in will be rezoned to general commercial, mixed use and light industrial, essentially going from rural county to Tumwater UGA zoning designations. And then on the map, you can see the one on the left will be the properties being added in. And then the, the map on the right will be the ones being removed. We anticipate a pretty high uh public interest in this project as well as staff resource needs. And as the commissioner mentioned, there has been quite a few co- public comments related to this proposal, related to the UG expansion, traffic concerns and multiple other factors in there.
I will note that we, we are trying to do our best to capture comments that came in on previous docket cycles, especially for new commissioners that might not have been here. This is a new application though, so the kinds of comments that you're going to see this year might be different than were received in prior years because instead of a straight UGA expansion, um, this is a UGA swap. I just want to sort of put that out there um for you.
Yeah, and the difference being the twenty-two legislation that was passed to make this possible. And I guess, uh, it seems to me that when this was originally talked about, I don't know, maybe a couple of years ago, I'm not really sure on the timeframe. The city of Tumwater was uh maybe lukewarm at best on whether or not they thought this was a good idea. But since then, I understand that the city of Tumwater has now come on board and thinks this is a good idea. So is that, is that right?
So all of those comments would be considered in the conversation. So we're just the facts right now in terms of what the request is. And then it's up to the Board of County Commissioners to take all that information and weigh it.
But that is kind of the way it's progressed, isn't it? I mean, our, at this point.
I'm not going to put a value judgment on Tumwater's perspective, good or bad. They did provide their input on the way that they think it could take place. I think the comments that we were seeing are supportive of the concept as well.
Yeah, I mean, but it has changed some, probably a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Something happened, I don't know what happened.
It's a good conversation now with the applicant and to review those notes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Moving on.
Very diplomatic, sure.
Absolutely. Never fails. To the Beaver Creek site specifically land use and rezone. This is a request to rezone approximately three hundred and eighty-nine acres in the Maytown area from rural res- uh rural residential resource RR one to five to rural resource industrial. Possibility of dedicating open space around the stream. This was added to the official docket in twenty twenty-one and prioritized six out of nine of the comprehensive plan amendments. We anticipate a pretty high staff resource need and there is a very high public interest. We did hold an open house this past year, um, which was pretty well attended and we had around sixty-five comments expressing concerns over the rural character, ag land, uh, critical areas and so on. There's also been quite a few comments received during the different docket cycles too related to the project as it relates to the ILS or the industrial land study. I'm waiting for that to be complete. And now that that's complete, it does recognize that there uh is adequate industrial lands at this point, but there will be more needed in the future, but at this point, we're good.
And and there's nuances to that for those commissioners that watch the industrial land study briefing, you know. Overall, if you just look at the broad numbers, yes, the county has enough industrial lands. But of course, there are a lot of, there's a lot of data in that report. And when you start drilling down to, do we have lands particularly of the right size or with the right utilities? You know, there's just a lot of data there. So we will make sure if any of these get added to the docket, that we are providing more information from that study specific to these applications.
Yeah, and kind of what you're referring to there is if we've, uh, even though they, they may have determined there's enough acreage available, maybe it's not located in a prime location, maybe as this is for an example of being on the railroad and and on the freeway and all of that infrastructure stuff that makes it more possible. And it seems like currently this is the one and five zoned property, right? So then it's up to us to determine if that would be a healthier move, I guess. We, we've got the applicant's application, but would it be better to have uh seventy-five houses in there? Or three industrial park or an industrial park or something? So which, which would be better for the community and the environment? That's where we would come in, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Moving on to the Upcastle site specific land use and rezone request. This uh request is, the request to rezone approximately thirty-three acres right at the border of Lewis County and South Thurston County from residential, rural residential R one to twenty, um, to rural resource industrial. There were two applications submitted. The first application that we did receive went through the planning commission process, received a recommendation not to move forward with the rezone. And following that, an environmental determination of significance was issued on the proposal. The applicant then submitted a follow-up application which was added to the preliminary docket, which was not substantially different from the original proposal. And then subsequently at the last docket cycle, it was added to the preliminary docket and put on hold until a later date when the board felt it was okay to move forward with it.
I, I guess, just as a follow-up to that, on the depiction here, the picture, to the bottom of the page, that's the Lewis County line now, right?
That's correct.
And in that area below there, that's Lewis County's industrial park?
There is a industrially zoned property just south of this property.
There've been a bunch of warehouse complexes and stuff there, that's what. And that is that opportunity zone that Josh referred to that falls within that?
The opportunity zone. The opportunity zone runs down Old Highway 99. I don't know.
To this location, to the county, to the county line?
It runs the Old Highway 99.
But does it go down to the county line, do you know?
I believe so. I think it expands into Lewis County because it is a federal designation.
And what is an opportu, what, can you kind of give us a little bit of what does that mean?
I think it sounds like.
Oh, maybe you already know?
No, that's why I asked for briefing. I've been briefed on it, but it's, it's.
It's pretty complicated.
It is, yes, it's fairly robust and complicated.
But it'd be, it'd be great to have Jenica, our economic development manager, as well as the EDC, who's been leading the charge on the Aussies opportunity.
I just asked for this yesterday because like this is, this is something, it's a hot topic.
You asked for it yesterday?
Rest to be briefed on it as soon as possible.
Oh, so it's coming?
Yeah, Jenica, Jenica's working on finding a time.
We'll put my question on the shelf.
It's timely, it's a good discussion.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
There was a pretty high interest in the proposal as well as it did require pretty high staff needs. During the PC review alone, we received 254 comments with a wide range of topics related to the loss of ag land, buildable lands report, the ag update that's still ongoing. And.
And this was the application that when the planning commission forwarded a recommendation to the board, this was also when they forwarded the recommendation to complete an industrial land study. So this is kind of the kickoff to the industrial land study that was done.
Okay, what, what is that pink area? It says rural commercial center? What is that?
It's a, it's a commercial zoning district for the rural area.
So it's going to be fairly limited compared to a commercial zone?
They put a tire shop there or a gas station?
I don't know the specific uses that are permitted in that zone, unfortunately. But it would be a more commercial-based zoning that you would see kind of retail or restaurants or something along those lines.
I was just wondering, I think there's a shoe repair shop or something in that area or something. I wondered if that was special for that or something. Okay, good enough, more to come.
And then this is one of three proposals that we received that are requesting a change to our, our RRI zoning district zoning code to expand the capabilities of it so that this site would be able to move forward. Because based on the current location of this site, it is outside the perimeter allowed for an RRI zoning designation. It must be within a half mile of an interchange and a railroad, multiple factors.
For warehouse distribution in particular.
For warehouse distribution.
So looking at changes to the locational criteria in that zone to allow additional uses.
This is not within the UGA.
This is not. So it would not have urban services.
And this is not within the service area of, of the Grand Mound UGA, right?
Nope.
Is that part of what Commissioner Mensah was talking about with, with that group that he was involved with in looking at that? So there was a request to do something, but that group said, no.
Not for this one, that was Mr. Deskin's proposal in particular that was outside of the service area.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the Black Lake Quarry site-specific land use and rezone amendment. They are requesting to rezone approximately 270 acres in the Little Rock area from rural residential R1 to 5 to rural resource industrial with code changes to 20.29, which is the RRI zoning district, to expand the permissible uses allowed. This project was placed on the preliminary docket in 2022. And we do anticipate it would have a pretty high public interest as well as staff resource need. Few comments received during the 2022 as well as 2023 docketing cycles, mostly relating to the different studies that are underway. So the industrial land study and then the ag zone, ag update that's going underway right now. I think that's it. It's been on the preliminary docket, so we don't have an estimated timeline of when this project could be completed. It is really right at the beginning if it were to be added to the docket. Moving on to the Port of Tacoma site-specific land use and rezone amendment. This is requesting to rezone approximately 746 acres in the Maytown area from R1 to 20, our rural residential 1 to 20, to RRI with a code change to title 20.29 or the RRI zoning district to allow expanded uses. The board decided not to add a similar proposal to this in 2020. It was originally referred to as the Maytown rezoning proposal. And so at this point, no work has been done. This is a new proposal. And because the docket wasn't open last year, it was just put onto the preliminary docket. Based on the proposal and just the level of interest that we had during the first proposal back in 2020, we expect a very high public interest as well as staff resource need. A little snapshot in the past, during the 2020 docketing, we did receive over 748 comments related to this proposal as well as a petition with 6,000 signatures requesting that the project not be added to the docket. And subsequently, the board did decide not to include it on the docket. And because it's on the preliminary docket, we don't have an anticipated timeline because it's right at the beginning.
There's been a lot of changes to the proposal since then, has there?
It's very much the same.
It is substantially the same as the one that was considered in 2020.
So the ones on the preliminary docket like this one and the previous one, for those to be considered, like, you know, as we, as we move forward with the docketing process, take comments, do we have to ask now that things be moved from the preliminary docket? Or will this whole package go forward and receive comments?
So more, when I reference the preliminary docket, it's kind of the context of where it was at last year. Everything is essentially on the preliminary docket until the board decides to add it to the official docket. And so we're kind of in the refresh year. And so everything's kind of up to the discretion of the board to move forward or not.
We would be taking comments on all of the proposals to answer your question rather than deciding which ones at this point.
Not picking winners or losers just yet.
Which is going to be your job.
Yeah, but not today.
Not today.
Oh, no, I was just going to say adding past comments from prior docketing cycles is a, is a new thing. And that's in response to specific feedback we've gotten from the community that they want to make sure there's a fuller picture for the, the board to consider in, you know, moving forward.
But if there's no appetite for this one currently, it's still going to be in here until we remove it later? And you guys are still going to get bombarded with comments?
We will, all the projects currently listed that you see today will be open for comments. The board on the 25th, if they so decide, can remove it entirely from the consideration for future projects. And that would subsequently mean they have to reapply if they so decided. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm just a little unclear on today's decision. When we first started, I was, I wrote down that like we're, we're deciding today if items move forward for the 20-day comment period. And now I feel like I'm hearing they're, they're all going to move forward for the comment period no matter what. So we don't even have a choice about whether we want to open it up for comments. We don't decide on anything until the 25th of March.
Opening the package for comments.
To her point, though, I mean, we don't get to tell people what they can comment on or not.
Yeah.
But does the board have an option to not put something in for the 20-day period?
I have to research that.
Yeah, we'd have to research that.
Let me ask you a question about that. When, when you do things outside the norm, does that expose the county to litigation? That would be my question in that regard.
I think it would be important to follow a proper process. And so what I'm hearing from staff is.
Which we have established.
It all goes out to the 20-day commentary.
Today's decision is whether we move this whole packet forward or not. So there is a decision.
And I think it's helpful, I mean, at least from the, the public's perspective, right? That the board is taking all of that input prior to making a decision or making a recommendation of what's included or what's not. Because if you don't offer that opportunity, then you were kind of predetermining, as Commissioner Ebert said, the winners and losers.
That's fair.
And so if you don't do that, then it's not as inclusive and transparent as it could be.
Yeah, I guess, oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yes, just for process-wise, I thought we couldn't make decisions in these meetings.
Yeah, and so, thank you for that. We're not asking for the decision in this meeting. There will be a direction for us to go that we're going to request to go out to that 20-day commentary.
Well, we'll put it on Monday afternoons for decision so that the 20 days wouldn't start today.
Correct.
Or tomorrow. But we'll have it on Monday afternoons for direction from the board.
And I think, did you have more thought, Commissioner Fuss?
Oh, I just have a last thought on this, this one that we're talking about, the big one. Because we say we want to take in all the comments, but this one already received like over 750 comments. So that's why I was wondering, but it sounds like it's, I mean, I don't want to push. If it's like, no, the norm is, it's the whole package going forward for comments, that's fine. I was just trying to understand what decision we're making today. So it's the whole package today, there's no picking and choosing which ones are open for comment, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good clarification.
And I guess just being, I've been here for the longest, I just might bring up that this particular property cost the taxpayer $16 million already. So that was a prior award. And we kind of got out of sync. And when the Supreme Court ruled against Thurston County, it was a 9-0 ruling against the county.
I think this property has a lot of history, and I think there's varying points of views on it. So I, I think there's just going to be a lot of discussion in the board as well as in the public about this project.
Oh, oh, for sure, sure. Oh, this is going to be a big deal. I just, I just point out that, you know, we've, we've had some missteps somewhere along the line that we didn't follow the rules quite right. So, and that's why I bring up that litigation issue is because it is a big deal, a lot of money involved, a lot of interest in it. So we should maybe stick with the rules as best we can.
Clearly.
Well, I would acknowledge, and also just to put a pin in that we have not had any process missteps in the past, in the current era, in the past six years on these processes.
Oh, yeah, this, this goes back to 14 or something.
That's right. Just to make sure we have clarity in.
Continuing on. Is your hand down, Commissioner Mejia, or is it still up?
It's down.
Okay.
There we go.
The Scott, the Scott Street land use amendment and rezone is a request to rezone approximately 54 acres from rural residential R1 to 20 to rural residential resource 1, RRR1 to 5 in the Rochester area. This was added to the preliminary docket in 2022 because the docket never really opened that year. We anticipate a pretty low public interest in this project as well as a low staff resource need. During the 2022 docket cycle, we did receive eight comments, and most of them were an objection to the proposal. Because the project hasn't officially started, we don't have an anticipated completion time at this time. Moving on to the final applicant-initiated request. This is the Martin Way Land Use Amendment and Rezone. This request to amend eight acres, approximately eight acres or two parcels in the Lacey Urban Growth Area from Low Density 0 to 6 or LD to Mixed Use High Density Corridor MHDC. This is a new application, so no work has been completed at this point. And we anticipate a low public interest as well as a low staff need. And just as some context, the Lacey joint plan was just adopted this past year. And so this is kind of on the tail end of that.
And, and this one is in the Lacey UGA? And the applicant has indicated that they're requesting it to resolve a split zoning, split zoning issue on these parcels.
That concludes the applicant-initiated request. And now we're going to move on to the Development Code docket request. The first proposal will be, or the first project is the Shoreline Master Program. As you all are aware, there was a resolution adopted, sending a draft to the Department of Ecology for review. And so this is more of a placeholder so that when we do finally get word back from Ecology that we are good to move forward, we are able to pick that back up and run with it. So this will more or less be a placeholder so that we can move forward at a later date. There was pretty high interest during the SMP workshop. There, before 2021, there were 1,300 comments related to this proposal. And then after that point, we received over 400 of those. It has a pretty high staff resource need and public interest. And we anticipate final action on the Shoreline Master Program in 2025. Moving on to the Forest Land Conversions Code Ordinance. As you all are aware, this is in your guys' court at this point, or the board's court at this point. And that is to look at amending the Forest Land Conversion Code to clarify rural forest cuttings throughout the county. This was prioritized as seven out of 18 on the Development Code docket in early 2022. And the board has been briefed and a public hearing has already occurred.
Yep, there's a follow-up briefing on February 26th to respond to questions that came up.
There is a low staff resource need at this point, and there is a medium public interest. There have been a fair amount of comments received, both during docketing and the PC and board review. And most of those relate to the climate mitigation plan, stronger tree predictions, and consistency with the cities. And we anticipate completing this project in the first to second quarter of 2024. Moving on to the Tumwater UGA Joint Code Update. This is on the tail end of the joint plan adoption. And this is essentially aligning the different UGA codes to the city so that there is that seamless transition from the city to the UGA. And this is currently underway. It is prioritized as five out of 18 on the Development Code docket. And the joint plan was adopted in 2022. We anticipate a pretty high staff resource need because it is kind of a rewrite of the code to align it with the city. And a, a low public interest.
Who's the, who benefits the most from this? Does the city of Tumwater benefit, or do we benefit?
I would say the residents of the urban growth area because it does allow for that seamless transition from the urban growth area to at that point when they're annexed into the city. It's kind of a seamless transition and doesn't, there's no separation or it looks different. We want to make a match essentially.
And this is that next step from getting all the joint plans updated. Essentially, we have established the policy framework in order to move forward with these joint code updates, working with the North County Cities.
Yeah.
We anticipate starting with the planning commission later this spring and expect to potentially complete this by the end of the fourth quarter of 2024, the first quarter of 2025. The next is the Olympia UGA Joint Code Update. This project is prioritized two out of 18, and this would be updating Title 21, which is the urban growth area code for Olympia. The project is not underway, but will probably follow the Tumwater code as soon as that's complete. We expect a pretty high staff resource need and a low public interest in this. Haven't been many comments, but mostly supporting the transition of, bringing the code up to date. And the joint plan was adopted in 2023 of last year. And we expect the work to begin late 2024 to early 2025 and potentially end at the end of 2025 to 2026. It's a big project. Same for the Lacey Joint Plan, or Lacey UGA Joint Code Update. This is titled.
It's paper, it's okay.
Somebody dropped a book out there, just so you know.
Yeah.
This is updating the Lacey UGA code to align it with the city of Lacey. This was prioritized four out of 18 on the Development Code during the 2022. And the joint plan was updated in 2023 of last year.
So I just want to check in real quick. This is huge, this is where the rubber meets the road. So talking about all the things that we have to dig out of, we talked about the joint plans already. That's the vision that was passed in 2023. These code updates are, like I say, where the rubber meets the road in terms of permitting. And so you, the previous board last year had a good meeting with the city of Lacey where the mayor of Lacey was frustrated with the permitting process and the UGAs. And we, as joint staff, committed that that next big step was going to be passing the joint plans and then working on the joint code updates. So this is happening. What we committed to with the city of Lacey and the Board of County Commissioners last year, this is those commitments, is aligning those codes so there's less confusion like Andy said, Andrew, said in the UGAs for the folks that are coming in for permitting. So again, this is just another one of those big successes in process that the Board of County Commissioners has been a part of, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and there's, there's a lot of opportunity because we're doing this as part of the comp plan updates because we're all. part of the comment plan updates, because we're all, everyone in Thurston County, all the jurisdictions are doing the conference of plan updates, to, to be able to pull in updates related to housing as we go through the joint code update process.
We again, expect a high resource from staff as well as low public interest, and again, the completion isn't likely until 2025 or 2026. Moving on to the transfer of development rights and the purchase of development rights, this is a docket item that would implement new standards and changes to the program to increase the incentives to actually utilize this program, the board did accept a grant from the EPA to move forward with this proposal, and it was prioritized 15 out of 18 on the Development Code Docket, the reason, I believe, Ashley, is we haven't moved forward with this yet is because it's slightly contingent on the AG update, and it kind of will follow the AG update whenever that is completed.
Yeah, and we are waiting for the request for proposals to close, and we'll hopefully get a consultant on board in the next few months to kick that work off.
This would apply, apply countywide, and this would have a pretty high staff resource need and a high public interest, we have received two comments during the 2022 docket cycle, and the comments themes mostly revolve around the lack of funding for staff to implement this proposal, and it deserves a high consideration. Stakeholder outreach has begun, and the technical work for the consultant is expected in the second quarter of this year and through 2025. Moving on to the review of SEPA comment period timelines, this was a request by the Board of County Commissioners during the 2022 docket cycle, and this was to look at the timelines for comment periods for SEPA, and to just look into that, it was considered during that, the 2022 docket cycle, but added to the preliminary docket, and no work has happened on it at this point, we expect a low level of staff resource needs, but a medium public interest in this proposal, we have received no comments on this, and further research would need to take place with the SEPA rules to make sure that there is that flexibility to take a look at changing those timelines.
The history on that one real quick is, the Board of County Commissioners received comments from folks that wanted to slow, to have more time to review land use applications, to extend the SEPA timelines, so that they could have more opportunity to review all of those applications in the process, and then the board alternatively received comments from folks that wanted to develop those areas that we should shorten, that the board should shorten those SEPA timelines because it takes too long for their application to be processed, so the board heard two different things, lengthen, shorten, and asked to have it put on the preliminary docket.
Moving on to the less restrictive alternative LRA Community Housing Code Update, this was at the request of the Board of County Commissioners, and this relates to community housing facilities for less restrictive alternatives, related to sex offender housing type things, this relates to the 10-9-0 proposal that was received, I think, last year, the year before, and at this point, we don't have code regulations that kind of guide the placement of those and the standards that would apply, we are limited by what we can require, but this would take a look at what standards we could implement within our code to actually respond and semi-regulate, no work has happened on this, this is considered a new item, we do anticipate a high public interest and a high staff resource need.
So let me just preface that a little bit, work has been done on this in terms of legal review, I think you heard this warning in the legislative update, that the state legislature essentially has the bounds on RCW, and we in CPED have been working with legal counsel to see what we can do with our code that still aligns with RCW to improve our LRA, the least restrictive alternative code here locally in Thurston County, so while the docket item hasn't necessarily been worked on, and within the community planning group, within community planning and economic development CPED, we Development Services, we have been engaged with legal counsel to try and create something for the Board of County Commissioners in response to public input, but it's got aligned with RCW.
We have another new development code proposal, and that is the Permit Review Process Annual Update, this is a new proposal from CPED that would allow us to respond rapidly to emerging issues related to our permitting review process, and we anticipate with this project and this cycle, looking at the board's appeal process, docket review, and binding site plans, all outstanding requests from either the board or the Development Services staff to address soon, and this will be considered an annual, at least from our perspective, an annual update that allows us to respond to those emerging issues more rapidly.
Yeah, and there's efficiency here, if we bundle, if we bundle permit review process updates into one item to bring before the Planning Commission, bring before the board, we'll be clearing all of our community outreach, the, the components of it, but it will create efficiencies in terms of scheduling one public hearing with the Planning Commission, having them review it as a package instead of these individual items, because a lot of these things are linked, so it's kind of, we, we just went through code clarifications and corrections this last cycle that worked really effectively, and trying to extend that to a few other areas where we know there have been these standing requests and how to best address them.
So back to the initial concept that the restrictions on having things move faster, staff resources, planning commission, and process, this kind of hits all three in terms of improving all of them, you've got them bundled up in a package, the process is quicker, it's less nickel and diming review for the Planning Commission, and it's less nickel and diming staff report time, so this is a great one from the staff as they continue to be creative and finding ways to move things along in a quicker and more efficient process.
The next item is going to be the New Uses and Related Standards Annual Update, this is very similar to the Permit Review, but related to new uses and standards, and this will allow staff to work with Development Services who have identified uses or standards that are missing within our code, to respond to those and address those in a more timely manner, those could include food trucks, vacation rentals, and other use-related provisions throughout Thurston County code.
Yeah, so these are sort of emerging is uses that may not have been addressed when the zoning districts were originally adopted, but, you know, over on the permit side, we get inquiries for them, and we don't necessarily have standards or the use isn't listed, and so it requires interpretations or longer processing time, so there's already an ongoing list that Development Services has identified, along with just having definitions for some of these things, so this would address that list and also give us the opportunity to address future, future items that come up.
And remember, this is where permitting, this is breadth group, where the rubber meets the road, and when the code was written, it didn't envision food trucks or VRBO or whatever.
VRBO.
VRBO, right, and so you've had staff over there that is trying to make their own personal interpretation of what they think belongs in those areas, and they don't like that, they want to make sure that what they're doing is correct and clear within code, so this is their request to provide a better understanding for the applicant so that we're not shooting from the hip, that we're working with code that's actually updated with the current era, so that's just, I think it's important to hear that your folks are trying to find ways to honor what they're hearing from your constituents.
We anticipate a low staff resource need as well as low public interest in this, and it'll be very similar to the code clarifications, which is the next item, these are all three very similar in their intent and just address different topics, the code clarifications was widely successful two years ago when we took it through and adopted 80 pages worth of corrections throughout the code, and this would continue that success, and looking at addressing missing definitions, missing references, correcting table locations and things like that throughout the code, again, this would have a low interest from the public as well as low staff resource need, and would only really pop up when issues have been identified throughout the code. Now we're going to move on to the applicant initiated request to the development code, the first is going to be the Natural Landmark Program, this is the citizen request, or an applicant request to add a new chapter to Thurston County code that would preserve natural areas to create, and create a registry of properties for landowners to preserve with stipulations on those areas as well as penalties for removing, this was added, this application was received in 2021 and added to the docket in 2022, and prioritized 16 out of 18 during the 2022 Development Code Docket, this will have an anticipated need of staff at a medium level as well as a low public interest, during the 2022 docket cycle, we received public, four public comments, mostly relating to the protection of natural features and violating property rights, during our initial review of the proposal, staff did identify three possible legal risks in this proposal, and that relates to appeals of enrollment decisions without supporting state legislation, penalties for withdrawals cannot defensively be structured, and the potential obligation and liability for county concerning long-term property maintenance and enforcement.
Yeah, and this was a follow-up actually from a board briefing, our staff went and worked with legal counsel to try to identify what currently exists in terms of land conservation programs, both at our county level as well as the state level, and then any potential risk to establishing a new land conservation program that doesn't fit under those current frameworks, and so this was the feedback that we, we received from our legal counsel.
This was this, the one gentleman?
With the tree stand.
Yeah. Remember this briefing, Commissioner Edwards?
I, I remember this deal, some things come up since then, I think, that I'm just curious about, you may not know the answer to this, but certain properties have landowner restrictions placed on them and then filed with the auditor, and so someone goes to, I don't know, they're going to purchase this to build a house on, and they look at that filing, and it says there can't be a house on it, or there can't be a building higher than 10 feet, or something like that, for 99 years, or something like that, so how does that fit in comparison, I mean, we're trying to put together something to accommodate a citizen that had an issue wanting to protect this area, why couldn't that citizen just put that weight on that individually?
And they, they very well could, there's, there's many tools for individual property owners that don't affect broadly on a policy level anyone else's property rights, they could establish some type of conservation easement on their property and structure it the way that they would like, they just need to find someone who's going to receive that easement.
They're trying, they're trying to maintain the value, I guess, by having us put something in place, is that it?
So if you recall from the conversation, you, I think you did ask that question to the applicant, and the applicant said that he wanted the county to create a program, and what we're saying is, you have options to protect the land that you have.
Right.
Outside of the county creating a program, and staff is telling you, the board, that there are potential legal risks to the county creating a program.
And, and yet, the citizen still has the option.
Correct.
If he wants to protect that, it's just that he, likely he won't be able to sell the property for as much if those restrictions aren't.
He wanted, he wants the restrictions on, he's not, the applicant stated to the board in that meeting that it wasn't about the value of how much he's going to sell it for, he wants it to be restricted.
Yes.
What we're saying, what the Assistant County Manager is saying, is he has options to restrict his own property.
Okay, so we're still pursuing that, that's.
He can, he can pursue whatever he'd like.
No, but I mean, we're recommending that or something.
No, we're not recommending that, what we're saying is, after that briefing, we said, the board said, why, why would we create this program?
And cause us problems.
Yes, and we're saying.
They already exist outside of us.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's, is that a done deal, so are we done with it?
You need to tell us if it's a done deal.
Yeah, so it is still on the.
And legal's going to tell us why we should tell that person it's a done deal, I think, is that what's coming?
We've identified three legal risks.
Okay, I'm just, okay, good enough, thank you.
Following the 20 day.
I'm just wondering how that all.
Following the 20 day comment period, you can tell us whether to keep working on this.
Okay, thank you.
It has taken a lot of staff resources to delve into it, though, we, we have tried to do our due diligence in identifying all the options.
If you'll recall that briefing with the, where the individuals here, it was a lot of that same type of communication.
Okay, moving on to the candidates related amendments, this package has kind of evolved since the original application, there have been items mentioned by the board relating to AG uses and things like that, so it would look at replacing the term marijuana with cannabis, consider revisions to setbacks and size requirements for cannabis operators, and revise the definition around the cannabis, around cannabis, and this would affect multiple titles throughout Thurston County code, it would affect not only the rural county code, but all of the UGA codes as well, 21, 22, and 23, and look at expanding the use applicability of the AG designation, and then we received this in 2022, and so no work has been completed at this time on this project, we anticipate a pretty high staff resource need on this as well as a very high public interest in this proposal, during the 2023 docket cycle, we did receive 23 comments, mostly in support of the cannabis amendment, and the Planning Commission did pass a recommendation to docket this item for further consideration.
On this particular issue, is that an issue that a unique commercial interest in the community is interested in this, if I remember right, and could they, if we don't have the staff to do it, is that something that we could farm out at their expense?
So maybe we could have that conversation in the prioritization discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the no shooting zone, this is a non-GMA request that we received, and this would look at expanding the non-shooting zones specifically around the Black Lake and Lawrence Lake areas, and this would be outside the purview of the GMS team, and would require close coordination with the Public Safety Group.
Yeah, and sorry, so GMA Growth Management Act, GMS Growth Management Services, so, acronyms, so yeah, so the, the other docket items are two chapters that are related to land use or things that fall under the Growth Management Act, this one does not.
So you can see, the applicant on this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, so the board received input from folks around Black Lake that they wanted the shooting zones addressed, and the board wasn't sure where to put that, so they gave it to us because CPED is good at process, not, it's not a land use issue, this is one that lives with us because the board wanted us to have this discussion on process for public input.
I actually think there was some conflict with the game department or something, or.
Again, that's what all that consideration would be.
Okay, thanks.
This was considered during the 2022 docket cycle and left on the preliminary docket, we anticipate a pretty high staff resource need and a medium public interest, during the 2022 docketing cycle, we did receive nine comments, some preferred more restrictions, while others preferred maintaining target practice and shooting allowances, and this, again, would require close coordination with public safety. The next docket item would be the firework provision, this is also outside of our purview, this would look at amendments to Title 6, 10, and 26 relating to firework discharge, the request is outside the purview of the Growth Management Act, and would require, again, close coordination with public safety to make the changes needed to accommodate this request, from my understanding and reading through the application, they are looking to curb the fireworks being shot off throughout the year, and so some context on this proposal.
Sounds like that's the fire marshal's role.
Yes, so the applicant identified Title 26, staff's, just preliminary analysis, we don't think Title 26 would address the underlying concerns that the applicant has.
Title 26 is code enforcement, and again, this is not a land use issue, this is more of a public safety issue, fire marshal enforces, the code as it's written in the Public Safety Chapter, which is 10, Chapter 10, and the board has heard comments on this on a number of occasions, where this applicant is of the position that fireworks should not be discharged at New Year's and during the Fourth of July celebration, what the board has also heard is that fireworks should be discharged at those times, and in fact, should be potentially expanded throughout the year, so this is one of those places where the board has heard comments from all different sides of this issue, it's not a land use issue, but it is something that the board asked us, again, to continue in this process so that we can have the conversation.
Probably some tribal input there, too.
You say fire marshal.
That's him.
Yeah, who is that, and what does that person actually do?
Yeah, that person is me.
I'd like to learn more about that sometime soon.
I, I feel that.
That's a, that's a big question for a lot of people around here, and I, I'd like to explore that someday.
Definitely, we can have a deeper conversation on it, in terms of the role as the fire marshal, it's a person here at the county to help understand and enforce the code of the, that the board has set in place, mainly relating to the building fire and building code, fireworks, and temporary ban on fire. fire and building code, fireworks, and temporary ban on fire burning throughout the high fire seasons. It is not a police authority.
Yeah.
It is a code authority. And so the police authority, the fire districts, they maintain that whether or not they go out.
Kind of.
Onto the locations.
This is a very under, misunderstood and underutilized kind of aspect of what government does in Thurston County, and I'd, I'd like to explore it sometime soon.
It's a good idea, we can for sure.
Yeah.
This is not a land, it's not a docket issue.
No, no, this is just a.
Definitely.
This is Josh's favorite duty as assigned.
Thanks, Commissioner.
So we anticipate a medium staff resource need and a medium public interest, and again, this would require close coordination with public safety. So that concludes all of the projects proposed for the 2024 to 2025 dockets. It's a lot. Not as many as the past. This is actually less.
Really?
Oh, yeah. So there are some outstanding questions that we would like to ask the board. I think the, the first one, and I think the easiest one to answer, is, is the board comfortable with moving forward with the twenty-day public comment period? And then the second relates to the UGA swap and noticing of the affected property owners. And so the, kind of a question for the board is if, how, how should we approach the noticing of those affected property owners? We mean, how should we?
So we, we want to get ahead of the curve. We're trying to be responsive to the applicant, anticipating that the twenty-day comment period, whatever the next steps are, we want to know what we should put in place. This UGA swap conversation hasn't ever taken place before. One of the requirements is noticing the folks that are going to potentially be taken out of the UGA, and our consideration for the board is anticipating next steps. What do you think? How should that happen? Should the applicant go out and reach out to all those folks that could be taken out of the UGA and provide us a list of those names and parcels and their perspective? Or do you want your staff going out and looking at all of those different parcels and having conversations with them? Or receiving that information and then verifying it?
What, what's the RCW say?
That's it, that's exactly why we're asking the question.
There should be some kind of official notice, I would imagine, saying that you're being considered.
So our interpretation, our thought, this is where we're, as we're building this airplane together, our thought might.
Fly on the airplane while you're building it?
We're all, we're all in, on off, we're all in it.
Seen that window fly out of that thing?
Watch out for those doors.
Is that the applicant, the applicant should come to us with the list of names and parcels and contact information and a potential perspective from their point of view of what those different parcel folks think. So the, is where it says noticing for UGA swaps, yes or no? Yes, applicant or county-driven notices. My perspective would be it should, that initial should be done by the applicant, and then the staff can verify if the board would like us to. That would be my suggestion.
And so taking a look at the broader scope, for noticing with docketing, we don't do an official mailed notice, we do a constant contact blast, we post it to the project.
What, what did you call it?
A constant contact.
Email, email.
Email blast. Posted, posted to the project's webpage as well as do a press release and a legal ad. The only times that we do a mailed notice for a rezone is during the actual public process with the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners.
Do you feel this is a different type of scenario?
Well, there are eighteen parcels that are part of this project that are not the applicant. So in most cases, a rezone application, there's a applicant that is the property owner or, you know, property owner plus maybe other interested parties. This is a new one. We have an applicant, you know, who's proposing to bring their property into the UGA, but in order to do that with a swap, property has to come out and just wanting to verify.
There's affected parties, and we need to have positive confirmation that we've contacted them.
Yes, and it's, it's a procedural step, and it's really just making sure that we're being as transparent as possible. We, we don't necessarily want those affected parties to find out when it's going to a planning commission public hearing. We'd rather have them find out as early in the process as possible so they can participate in that twenty-day comment period.
And the recommendation that I made is based on what we learned from getting rid of the islands with the City of Tonewater. Commissioner Edwards made a, I think, a very good point at that time, has anybody called any of these people? And so anticipating that, we wanted to get ahead of this curve. You know, this is not necessarily a decision point, this is more of a conversation point in terms of how you think we should proceed. I think we should proceed in a very similar fashion, the way that we did with the Tonewater Island Annexation Discussion, where we make sure that everybody's engaged, that's going to be affected, and that it starts with the applicant, and then we can take the time to verify, but I think that's an important step. The bigger direction is coming next week for you guys to tell us the start the twenty-day comment period. So I don't want to get lost in the weeds of this UGA swap conversation, but I wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that was on your radar. I think we also have one here, too.
Yeah, I have a question. So like, what does this look like exactly when we talk about noticing if the property owner or the applicant goes out and notices everybody? Is that like they're knocking on doors, they're calling their neighbors, they're talking, like what exa, what exactly does this noticing look like?
You're saying, you're saying the applicant needs to collect all the data for us, give us the names of the eighteen people that need to be contacted, and then we take it upon ourselves to send out a notice to those eighteen affected parties, right?
I think that would be a good process. I think in the first, that first.
So it's on us, and then the applicant themselves could do all the, the meeting with the, with those affected parties that they want, but that's outside of our influence.
Do you have some of that data?
Oh, no, no, we, yes.
We have that information already.
Yeah, and the alternative, if the applicant is not the one doing it, would the alternative just be our staff looks into the eighteen people ourselves and sends out the notice to them, and the applicant doesn't have to do the legwork of providing those names? Would that be very hard for our staff to do that? I mean, don't we have that data already in the system?
So we're talking about eighteen now, but we also want to build a template that could be repeated later.
That's six hundred.
And, yeah, exactly, and so that's why it would be, as we're thinking about how this one operates.
Yeah, so we're like setting a precedent because it's the first UGA swap.
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. And it would be helpful from our staff perspective to have that information front letter from the applicant.
So you're going to have the applicant submit a list with a roll of stamps?
But contact information.
And if we were to put it all on the applicant to contact the affected parties, there's no way to control that, there's no way to vet that, there's no way to make sure that that's really done cleanly.
We want the feedback coming to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't worry, it's all good, you know, like, yeah.
So the, anything more on the UGA conversation?
No, I mean, what I'm hearing is that yes, notice, county would send, send out some, some written notice as part of a broader comment period for the docket.
After receiving the information from the applicant of those areas.
That we verify.
And then those comments are just one piece of the puzzle, because we may look at it and we, and decide the best interests of the county are, they may not exactly align with the residents.
Yep, part of your conversation.
Looking at twenty, hundred years from now.
But I think it's, the goal ultimately would be able to get that input, that feedback as part of the twenty-day comment period so that it informs the board's conversation about what's docketed or not.
There we go. We do have an audience member, and it's up to the Board of County Commissioners if they'd like to call on anyone from the public, so wanted to make sure that that was, that person just rose their hand.
I didn't see that.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come into our work session?
Maybe briefly, my name is Mike Brewer, I'm with Par Holdings, the swap applicant, and I just wanted to reaffirm to the board that we would be more than happy. We've already provided all the tax parcel numbers and ownership information as part of our application, but we also have proactively collected and exchanged conversation with many of the parcel owners, and we would happily share any and all contact information we have for those folks immediately so that a notice could go, a brief notice could go out quickly and allow those parcel owners to participate in the twenty-day comment period, which, you know, we're trying to have this to be open and engaging and welcome conversation, so we, we want them to participate because we want them to bolster the, the board's perspective and confidence that there's a willingness on their part to, to participate or at least have the opportunity to participate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So I guess my question is, we're, in setting this precedent, we're basically weighing, like, staff time that it would take. I mean, it sounds like in this case, the applicant has done most of that work already, but we're talking about future swaps that might occur. I mean, what's your take or the board's take on, like, the potential for bias if the applicant is the one doing that work versus, like, I, I'm trying to kind of weigh the pros and cons. I mean, we have, like, potential for bias, which may or may not occur, we don't know, versus staff time that's going into getting this information.
What do you mean by the bias? That's what I'm saying, the only way to do is, is if the county is the one reaching out to the individuals officially. If, you know, if an applicant reaches out to them on their own, that has nothing to do with our official process, they can lobby them, they could.
Yeah.
Drop off a turkey to their front door, that's, that has nothing to do with us, but, you know, they have to be the ones that send out the notice.
But after, they verify the information after the applicant gets that for us.
Which we have all that stuff anyways.
That's what I'm wondering, like, why exactly is this a question? I mean, is there a benefit to the applicant driving those notices versus the staff?
So it's, it's a matter of timing, so think about the application. So it would be helpful when the application comes in to have that information and a perspective, and I think that would be a good temperature check for the applicant to know if those folks that may be being pulled out even want this. Instead of the application coming in and it goes through all this process and then we reach out, it's the first time that anybody's ever been contacted on it, and then it all kind of falls apart at that point. So I think that there is, it's both and. So it would come in with the Excel document of the parcel numbers and the people and contact information from the applicant, and then we would verify.
So you're really talking about future process.
Yeah, like, like, so we didn't have that as a requirement of the application.
Right.
And, yeah, to Josh's point, it would be really nice to be able to say, direction from the board, UGA swaps, this is an element that would be required as part of that initial application. And then we would be able to, as we receive that application, verify that information and send out, you know, a mailed notice from the county.
I think that makes sense.
So we're, we're kind of concurrent at the moment, but in the future would have this homework done as part of the application process, and then.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So how, Rob, help?
So Monday afternoon, Rob's, that's Monday. So Monday afternoon, we'll put this on the board's decision points to then. Oh, my gosh. Who threw that in there?
The twenty. The president's. The president's did it.
So we want to, we want to make.
Is it in the actual board meeting?
No.
So hold on a second.
We can, we'll, we can combine it with our agenda setting Tuesday.
Great, and we don't need, like, full formal votes. This is direction.
Right. But, correct.
Yep.
But we had to confirm that actually as well, was, but we went back through prior docketing cycles to just make sure it didn't need, it didn't need a decision at a formal board meeting.
So a thumbs up at an agenda setting from the board next Tuesday.
We'll, we'll come, we'll combine Monday afternoon and Tuesday, we're gonna get together somehow.
And then all you're doing is saying, tell us more, to the committee.
Get, get comments on this docket as you presented it to us today.
On these items, yep, on these items. It's not, not the docket yet.
Not the docket.
Pre-docket.
Pre-docket.
Then, so moving forward after Tuesday, we anticipate starting probably the public comment period on either Thursday or Friday, with it ending on the thirteenth or fourteenth, following the twenty days.
Of March.
Of March. And then on the twenty-fifth, we will return to the board for the decisions on what's added to the docket, what's added to the preliminary or removed entirely from further consideration. And then to ensure that it's still fresh in your mind, return on that Wednesday for that prioritization. And then following that week is the final adoption of the docket.
What if three months from now, something else comes up that could be included in the docket? What, what happens then?
So.
Something low barrier, something that's easy to work on, it just makes sense. What do you guys do?
So if it's a project that could fall under one of the three annual updates, that allows us the flexibility to rapidly respond to one of those changes, if it's a, let's just say a new rezone proposal or something like that, that the board is adamant that gets added to this docket, they have to reopen the docket, reconsider all of the projects, redo the twenty-day noticing.
What if it's a new UGA swap that we want to get in before that time window comes up?
Same, same process.
There's a brilliant one that's on the, on the, on the horizon.
So the process you will go through for this cycle will be the exact same thing you'll have to do again.
But you don't have to wait ten years, you'd be like, whoa, we're opening the comp plan now, we can get it in in time.
What about November? If something happens in November, they have to have something.
Yep, so November fifteenth is when the application period closes for the next docket cycle, which will be the mid-cycle review of the docket. At that time, the board can decide not to open the docket at all, and everything not added to the docket will be shifted to the preliminary docket until further consideration can happen on it.
So back to your question, the hypothetical, it depends on what the request is. So we did have a land rezone request that came in after the board had made their docket decision, and the board had a conversation on whether or not to reopen the docket for that one, and it was determined, no, you cannot, you've got to open it for all, and the board said, you know what, let's not do this, and they stopped. If it was something else that didn't require as much noticing, again, this is staff resources, planning commission, and process, and so depending upon what the board thought was awesome, that needed to be heard quickly, we would tell you what that process is. So we can't give you a full answer unless something came in that we could then look at the process that applies to.
But I would anticipate two to three months of turnaround to get that all the way through again.
I think that's fast.
To get the docket.
You said you're fast now.
Yeah. He's a superstar.
And that pretty much concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was good.
Good job.
Commissioner Mehea, do you have any final thoughts for CPED?
Nope, I'm ready.
Awesome.
Please eat the chocolate.
Yeah.
Please eat the chocolates. They're fancy, too.
They look fancy.
Yes, bring some upstairs and share them.
Chocolate?
A big thank you to Amy for helping us schedule all of these briefings and getting it done in, like, really quick time. I don't know if it's record time, but quick.
So I'm gonna take a break, or are we gonna adjourn?
We have one thing left, commissioners' items. If there are none, we could just adjourn, I would imagine.
I don't have any.
I have none. Commissioner?
I just want to say I'm glad I got enough sleep last night because that was pretty intense, so.
Commissioner Mehea, do you have any commissioners' items?
Mine can wait till Tuesday.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Very good, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.